Thank you so much for being here. This is our Florisville City Council First Special Meeting for November the 20th at 6:00 PM. I now call this meeting to order. Please rise for our invocation following the pledge of allegiance. Honoring us today is Pastor Gill.
Please pray with me. Our gracious, heavenly Father, we thank you so much as we do every day for this beautiful day that you've given us. We thank you for the grace and the mercy that you show us every single day. We thank you for those who are gathered here this evening for the God that you blessed them. That the actions that are taken here this evening for the God be pleasing to you for the betterment of this city and the council and for the people of this town. We lift this moment into your hands for the blessings that you will. In the name of your Savior Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
We do have a forum for tonight's meeting. In attendance, we have Mr. -- excuse me, Mrs. Cantu. We have Mr. Jimenez, Mr. Ortiz, and Mr. Neeson, as well as myself. At this time, I open the floor for any citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for you to come up and speak to the council on any issue that you might have with a limit of five minutes. Okay? If not, moving on to new business, consideration and action to canvas and calculate the official returns of the general election held in the city of Florisville on Tuesday, November the 6th, 2018. We have our city election administrator and myself to go over those numbers.
Mayor, council, we have results from the November 6, 2018, general election. For early voting in the mayor race, we had Montegoles at 537 votes, Cecilia Gonzalez-Dippel at 633 votes. For council member place one, David Johns, with 581 votes, Marcy Jimenez with 587 votes. For council member place two, Nick Neeson, at 559 votes, and Gloria Estrada Martinez with 601 votes. On election day in the mayor race, we had Montegoles at 255 votes, Cecilia Gonzalez-Dippel at 299 votes. Council member place one, David Johns, at 252 votes, Marcy Jimenez at 304 votes. Council member place two, Nick Neeson, with 262 votes, and Gloria Estrada Martinez with 297 votes. Total votes for the election in the mayor race for Montegoles were 792, Cecilia Gonzalez-Dippel 932. Council member place one, David Johns, 833, Marcy Jimenez, 891. Council member place two, Nick Neeson, 821, Gloria Estrada Martinez with 898 votes.
Okay, council or council, are there any questions pertaining to the numbers? Motion on the floor by -- excuse me, Jimenez, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Ortiz. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Moving on to item 1B, consideration action to approve a resolution declaring the results of the general election held in the city of Florisville on Tuesday, November the 6th, 2018.
I'll make the motion to the floor.
The resolution does read as... A resolution declaring the results of the general election held in the city of Florisville on November the 6th, whereas the city of Florisville -- excuse me, whereas the city council of the city of Florisville has hereby to call for a general election to be held in said city on November the 6th to elect two city council members and one mayor hereafter stating. And whereas said city council has investigated all matters pertaining to said election, including the ordering, giving notice, appointing of officers, holding and making returns on said election, and the election officers who held said election have duly made the results of the returns of the results thereof, and said returns have been duly delivered to the city council. And whereas there came to be considered the return of an election held on the 6th day of November 2018 for the purpose of electing the herein after-named officials, and it appearing from said returns duly and legally made that there were cast at said election one 737 ballot and legal votes, that each of the candidates in said election received the following votes, as we just stated. So I do have a motion on the floor by Councilman Jimenez, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Ortiz. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Moving on to our presentation, will be the swearing-in of the mayor and city council members. I will go first, and I'm calling on Judge Sarah Cannon to help me with this.
It's my distinct honor and privilege today to swear in, Miss Mayor, Cecilia Gonzalez-Dippel. Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Cecilia Gonzalez-Dippel...
I, Cecilia Gonzalez-Dippel...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
Or affirm...
Or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of mayor...
That I will...
Faithfully.
Faithfully and...
Execute.
Execute the duties of the mayor.
Of the city of Florisville...
Of the city of Florisville.
State of Texas...
State of Texas.
And I will, to the best of my ability...
And I will, to the best of my ability...
Preserve...
Preserve.
Protect...
Protect.
And defend...
And defend.
The Constitution...
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States...
And laws of the United States.
The state of Texas...
The state of Texas.
And the city of Florisville...
And the city of Florisville.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Agreed, Lord?
In the name of -- name handed by the torch of the Spirit of Texas, I, Gloria Estrada...
I, Gloria Estrada...
And Marisa Jimenez...
And Marisa Jimenez.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute...
That I will faithfully execute...
The duties of office...
The duties of office.
Of council member...
Council member.
Place one...
Place one.
Place two... Of the city of Florisville...
Of the city of Florisville.
State of Texas...
State of Texas.
I will do my best...
I will do my best.
And my ability...
And my ability.
Preserve...
Preserve.
Protect...
Protect.
And defend...
And defend.
The Constitution...
The Constitution.
And the laws...
And the laws.
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
The state of Texas...
The state of Texas.
And the city of Florisville...
And the city of Florisville.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
No further business on this agenda. I do close this meeting at 6:09, and the new council members will join us up on the podium, then we will continue with our second meeting.
Ms. Mayor, I wanted to thank Mr. Neeson for everything he did to help us out with everything. Thank you.
Then we have a roll. Thank you very much, and I congratulate you on your continued performance. Moving on to our second special meeting of tonight, November the 20th. I now call this meeting to order. Please rise for our invocation and our pledge of allegiance.
Gracious God, we thank you once again, and we pray that the business of the city for the God that are being discussed this evening be just and effective for all involved in the works of the city, for the citizens of this town. For God, we lift up each council member. We ask that you guide them, give them the knowledge and the courage they need to fulfill their duties. We give you thanks, and we ask for blessings from those council members who have been reduced to citizens. We thank them for their work, for their diligence, and so, Father God, now we lift the business of the city into your hands. In the name of your Savior Jesus Christ, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
We do have a forum for tonight's meeting, and welcome in. Councilwoman -- Councilwoman Jimenez, Mrs. Gloria Martinez, we have John Ortiz, Gerard Jimenez, and Gloria Cantu. Thank you so much for being here. At this time, again, I open the floor to any citizens' comments. This is an opportunity, yes?
Thank you. Mayor, we can hardly hear y'all in the back, so I'm not sure if the mic's working. Can you hear me? Thank you. Mayor, can you try again?
We will have to get Monica back on that first. Okay, can y'all hear us a little bit better? Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, council, and congratulations to those of you who are recently elected. Mayor, Mrs. Turner, city attorney.
Where about city attorney?
Right here, Mayor.
Oh, okay.
Staff and audience. My name is Sherry Castillo, a citizen of Florisville and a Phelps Board member. I would like to address an item regarding the consideration and adoption of Phelps revenue bonds request. What will the bonds be used for, or how have Phelps customers benefited? The bonds will be used for major capital projects that will serve customers and contain providing effective, reliable, and cost-efficient electricity. What we must consider are the benefits from using bond funds and cash revenues to fund major projects such as replacing rotten poles, upgrading vehicle fleet, adding distribution lines to newly developed service areas, improving Phelps technical systems to integrate customer data, replacing power transformers such as the one replaced at the Florisville substation, upgrading distributing lines to provide alternative service, replacing meters with smart meters, just as the city has replaced the old water meters with smart water meters. The things that we have to do are not at all different from what the city does. They just have different names. One major project that would provide quality of life, especially safety, for Phelps employees would be to replace or update the building, which originally was used to sell blocks of ice for residential iceboxes. Don't take my word for it, as Marcy Jacobs...
Where is your Marcy? There she is back there.
...for a tour of the building. The two bathrooms are still being used by both men and women and are in worse conditions than the bathrooms we had here at City Hall before remodeling. ADA would implode the building. We won't even talk about the bathrooms in the warehouse. Not sure what ADA would do with that building. Hopefully, the board will consider the building idea this coming year. City Hall has been updated beautifully and appreciated by those who office and those who come here often for business or pleasure. Last year, Phelps made payments to three cities based on percentage of the prior year's gross electric sales revenue for a total of 1.5 million. Florisville received $738,536, and Polton Stockdale each received $207,713. And for 2018, these cities are receiving 1% more. These cities cannot afford to lose the funds, and Phelps cannot continue to grow and provide services needed without the bonds. Addressing growth and providing services to new areas will potentially increase the revenue distributed to the cities of Florisville, Stockdale, and Pol. My point in providing these numbers is to emphasize the importance of bond funds to enhance capital investments. A combination of bond funds and cash reserves allows for capital investments for the next three years. At this time, the bonds are being supported with asking for any rate increases. Issuing bonds allows all current and future customers money for the equipment instead of just those customers served today. The bonds are repayable from Phelps Electric revenues only. None of the owner cities are obligated to pay any of the fees for the issuance nor for the repayment of bonds themselves. Mayor, as you know, because you sit on the Phelps Board, we voted unanimously for this bond, and as a Phelps Board member, I'm asking for the councils to support. Without this bond, we will not be able to operate or add anything new in the new service areas. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other citizens' comments? Okay, now moving on to new business, consideration action to elect a mayor pro tempore for this next term.
I'll make a motion to elect, I mean, Gloria Cantu appointed.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor for Gloria Cantu. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Gloria Martinez. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those -- okay. Five to zero. Thank you very much. Moving on to presentation and discussion, item 2A, Phelps Review of the 2019 Operating and Capital Budgets from Phelps. We do have Mr. Michael Fennell and Marcy Jacobs.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here to discuss our budget. Okay, with you, I'd like to start with our operating budget. For purchased power, we budgeted $24.5 million. This is the cost we take EPS and REIT to provide us electricity and so for our customers. Transmission budget is $5,000. This is the labor involved, the bill can pay without transmission costs to service entities. For system operations, we budgeted $1.2 million. This is the labor for the dispatchers and the crews running the alleys and keeping lights on, as well as general operating costs associated with the distribution system, and this includes labor, trucks, and expense. System maintenance, budgeted $1.4 million. This is our maintenance cost, the materials used to respond to alleys and get light back on, substation maintenance, tree trimming, our tower inspections, and it also includes labor, trucks, and materials. For lighting maintenance, we budgeted $88,000, and this is the maintenance on the existing lights in our system, this isn't new additions. This is to go out and change out the bulbs, the heads, the wire, whatever needs done to keep those lights operating for our customers. Storeroom budget is $111,500. This is the cost associated with the maintenance of construction and maintenance and operation and design, facilities depreciation, employee labor.
Can we ask questions, or?
Yes. Anytime or at the end?
I take one. Just go ahead and let him finish, and then we'll have questions after we're finished.
Excuse me?
When you get through, we'll have...
Okay, absolutely. So the storeroom budget is also for employee labor, non-material, and trucks. For metering, the budget is $275,000. This is the labor and contract labor and trucks used to read our customers' meters today. Customer-related expenses, budget is $823,000. This is the cost associated with compiling and billing customers, office equipment and software, such as our own alleys management system and SCADA, and office equipment depreciation. For customer accounting, budget is $1.15 million. This is labor involved for customer service, billing, service technicians, and any employee working service orders or functions related to the customer. All others, the budget is $128,000. This is for office expenses, supplies, pay station, office billing, maintenance, and service truck technical expense. Administrative budget, $654,000. This is the labor for the general manager, finance, technology, and shore rail, and our trustee fees. For professional services, budget is $247,000. This is used to pay legal, financial, auditing, retirement expense, NRR study, and transmission access fees. Insurance, budget is $225,000. This is for liability and property insurance, workers' comp insurance for our employees, and customer damage payments. Employee benefits, budget is $394,000. This is the labor for human resources, health insurance, reimbursement, uniforms, and other benefits, such as work boots and safety glasses, et cetera, for our employees, and unemployment fees, and education and training costs. Franchise fees, the budget is $43,200. These are the payments to the city of La Veria and city of all city and are based on the city sales. Community support, budget is $81,600. This is what we do for stock shows, donations, our closing for the half day for the peanut festival, hanging banners, and it includes also labor, trucks, and materials. Utilities, this is the cost that we use to pay our bills, the budget is $274,000, and this is to pay the bills at the telephone track while we're through technology expenses that are not capital-related. All others, budget is $158,600. This is to cover bad debts, interest on customer deposits, bond renewals, advertising, membership dues, and fan expense. To go to the pie charts, the first one, the blue is what we pay EPS, that's 77% of our operating budget. The urban color is 23%, and that is actually what I'm just talking about there. And on the next, the next one, the transmissions expense is 0%, it's less than a percent of the overall budget. 38% would be distribution operations and 32% customer-related expense. Those two together, 70%, that's what we do to take care of our customers. 2% would be storeroom, and then the remaining 28% is general and administrative. The last pie chart, administrative payroll is 31%. Professional services is 12%. Our overall budget, 11% is insurance, 19% are employee benefits, 2% are franchise fees, 4% community support, and 13% utilities, and the all others is 8%. Questions on operating budget?
I was going to ask you on this store room, you have a negative of 70,500. That's going to be, that's the projection that you have?
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
That on where it says store room...
Yes, ma'am.
You have a negative of 70,500. You see that? What do you have the negatives for? One?
That's the, that's the negative, 70,800. That was the difference in the projection to the reality budget. We haven't spent as much this year as we have as we did last year.
Okay, so that's why the other negatives are on there, like 106,500 for the next one?
Yes, those are the differences between what we're projecting to spend in 2018 and what we're budgeting for 2019.
Thank you.
That's a question I want to ask. Can you ask the council how much you're asking us for that bond election, I mean, for the bond rate? How much you, how much you're asking for, the total amount of the bond?
Sixty...
That's on the next, that's on the next item.
Okay.
This is strictly on the budget for 2018. Any other questions?
Yeah, I've got a question. Mayor, how do you feel about this? You're, you're on the board, you support this, correct?
I do, I do. We went, we spent quite a bit of time going through this and making sure of the numbers and being reported to by Marcy and my Mike and Jimenez. I support this.
You know what the greater numbers for the, all the projects that they were looking at?
I don't have them in front of me yet, but they've been presented to us. Any other questions by the council? Any citizens' comments pertaining to the 2018 budget, Phelps budget? If not, I will entertain a motion.
No motion.
Hold on. It's, it's... Presentation, I'm sorry.
And I still have the capital, because it's just operating budget. You can keep them on operating budget, that's not any new lines or equipment that is possible to keep our customers' lights on today. For capital budget and land buildings and improvements, budget is $1 million, and this is for the design and beginning construction of an administrative complex. I'd like to remind you that this is being funded with cash and not bond debt. Transmission plan, budget is $15,000. This is the cost associated with compliance for our transmission line. We have no generation plan if we buy all our power off system. Substation equipment, budget is $149,000. This is for the reflect replacements and upgrades to increase the life of both towers and pictures, budget is $2.3 million. This is for customer construction, the pole testing replacement program, and the completion of the SS-30 circuit that you will feed toward the La Veria.
I think it's better to ask questions as we draw on it, so that way, you don't mind if you're going pretty fast, not able to be comment of what you got.
Yes, if you want to take a, just a little bit slower, line by line.
I'll do it.
Okay, so you're saying that the building, the improvement for this building, this one or you, this new facility?
The new building, we want to build over the next few years. We budgeted $1 million this year.
Okay, or where are you planning to put this at?
That is really up to the board. Right now, we have two plans that we're looking at, one is to remodel the existing facilities, the other is to build a new complex on our lot here downtown to maintain downtown presence in the city of Florisville.
So you're saying you're going to remodel this apartment?
That has not been decided.
That has not been decided yet.
Have you gotten a location yet, or?
Yes, on site, on property. Well, I envision, and this hasn't gone through the board yet, this building, a new building in the middle of that property, and then creating a nice drive-through and parking lot in the front of the property. So we've been trying the two buildings on the downtown property now.
You mean, right there where the, they do the, fix the cars, I mean, the trucks?
No, no, it was down here, here downtown, across the street over here, between the warehouse and the building.
Okay, okay.
So you're no longer going to use that as a warehouse, correct?
No, it hasn't been used as a warehouse in three years.
Okay, so that's going to be part of the remodel?
Three years ago, all of our warehouse materials moved down to the south building.
And I know, coming from the board, as a board member, we have discussed many different options.
Nothing's been decided, no.
Nothing has been decided, but the money has been set aside for how many years now, Marcy?
It's part of the reserve fund that we're going to, with this issue, we're going to It's part of the reserve fund that we're going to, with this issue, we're gonna be able to use that for capital and debt risk. So it's gonna be put aside for the last two issues, and there's about $1.5 million in there.
The reserves?
The, what we call a reserve fund, which is a fund that we have to fund for the bond issue.
So you have one and a half million?